Yeah, all right. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 13th, meeting of the Town Accord and Madera Planning Commission. Tonight, would you please call the order? Call the roll, Adam?
For then, good evening, Commissioners, Commissioner Metcalf. Please note that she is absent this evening. Go to Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Mendel.
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. At this time in every meeting, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you want to, you can email to publiccomment@tcmail.org. Or you can raise your hand on Zoom and we will be able to let you into the room to make a public comment. So it's open to public comment now. You have three minutes to make such comment. Tracy, is there anyone coming to the forefront?
No raised hands and we have no emails either.
Okay, good enough. We will close the public comment section of this meeting and we'll go straight to our first agenda item, which is a continued hearing. This is a continued hearing for 22 Eptide Passage. This is the continuation of a design review application number PL 2020-0100 for a 800 square foot, originally 831 square foot, second level addition and modifications to an existing single-story home at 22 Eptide Passage. Mr. Boyle, would you please take this away?
I sure will. Thank you all. Good evening. Can everybody see my screen there?
Mm-hmm.
Great. I put it into slideshow mode. There we go. So yes, as Chair Chase stated, this is the return of 22 Eptide Passage originally came before you on March 9. And at that public hearing, you, you all requested and the applicants and the neighbor agreed to work together to collaborate and come up with a revised design that would be amenable to all parties and have less of an impact on 13 Morning Star courses view to the south and that's Mr. Krista Scove, who is on the line with us. So I'll just briefly go through this, or maybe I'll ask initially, any Commissioners have an opportunity to visit the site either on the street or to either one of the properties?
I did.
I did. Yes.
Great.
I went by and visited the property twice.
Terrific. Thank you. And so this is a rendering of the new design. Let's see. So location same as before, of course, just to give you where we're located. I think, I don't think we have any new folks in the audience to this one. So this is our, our location on 22 Eptide. Site plan itself hasn't changed, but of course, the roof plan has, the building has been moved from, from the east side of the existing one-story building to roughly the center of the building. I'm showing here the original, where the first version and the revised first level four plan. Minor change, the stairway has basically been moved closer to the street, closer to Eptide and is, is is closer to one of the early bedroom, or one of the closest bedrooms to the front door. Again, a small storage area was, had to be taken out to accommodate the new stair. Terms of the second floor, again, the whole, the whole addition is shifting from east to west to the center. Still have the same rooms. We have the master suite with a bedroom, bedroom bath, walk-in closet. We have the stairway, of course, and we have the office slash craft room. All oriented the same place in terms of north-south, relatively speaking, and, but obviously, the whole, the whole second level is situated differently. Again, showing the, just a comparison of the front elevation rendering the, the south, the south side and, and the east side showing the different concept. And again, for the original, again, the original front elevation and the revised front elevation. Still using relatively the same types of windows, a little bit changed in exterior materials. They're highlighting this area here with a gable, a gable vent and horizontal siding and then bringing the stucco all the way down to kind of tie in these two elements. Whereas before, we had horizontal siding 100% on the, the lower level and stucco 100% on the second level. And solar panels will go back on. Probably the most, you know, the most critical view, critical elevation certainly to the scope is this rear elevation. Again, the entire building is shifted to the center, still use of clear story windows and all, all three windows are all clear story to minimize privacy impacts. We're going from, you know, from one window previously to, to three. But again, these are set quite, quite far back and do not really anticipate any privacy impacts with their location and design. West elevation, again, a little, a little bit of a shift. It's changed, changed the, the type of window here and, and windows at this location as well at the master bath. And lastly, the east elevation. You have a fair, a fair additional number of windows to get lighting in, but again, all these, these bank of, bank of four and bank of five are all clear story windows. And then the standard window here at the craft in the right direction. East, no, it's the, the master, master bedroom. So in terms of project summary, I just highlighted what's changed in red. So our floor ratio, floor area ratio has actually dropped a little bit. Gone from 48 to, to 40, to just under 48. And the height is, is increased a little bit as well from 21.5 to 23.7. And I'm sure the architect will describe that more if you're interested in why that height changed. I just want to acknowledge and thank the neighborhood collaboration, the, the Dells, the applicants and their architect, Matt Wakis, worked extensively with, with Miss stove of 13 Morning Star Course and the architect, Michael Rex. They had many, many meetings, many discussions. I think, thought they worked very well collaboratively. And as an addition, they also reached out to nine Morning Star Course. And so if you're looking, if you're in the, the second level of this new home and you're looking north towards Miss Scove's house and you, you glanced over to the left or to the west, you'd be looking at my nine Morning Star Course. So since the addition moved towards nine Morning Star Course, we thought it would be appropriate to check in with her. And she gave a written letter of support of the new design, which is in your packet. Also, there were no other comments from any of the other neighbors in response to the, the 300-foot notice that was sent out. As well as the, you know, no comments regarding the story polls either. Story polls were, were replaced and, and changed. And certification of accuracy was provided as well, just like before. Same, same analysis was done by staff in terms of taking pictures. You'll see in your staff report pretty much the same, the exact same locations and gave you a sense of, of how things have changed from, from design one to design two. Using the same methodology that I used previously. Just a couple of examples. Here's sitting at the dining room table. Original design to your left, as you can see, the orange mesh covering that part of Ring Mountain and then today's version, the revised on your right showing much more of Ring Mountain. And again, this is sitting at the deck table. You're obviously a bit lower, but again, you can see the difference in which, which view is, is obstructed from plan one to plan two. And based upon that, and again, I want to thank the both parties for their hard work. Staff is able to recommend again approval of this project and the attached resolution is there for your approval. Do mention that the, the project size has gone down from approximately 30 square feet. We're down to 801 square feet on the second level now. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll entertain those. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil, very much. I would like to check in with the Commissioners though first before we go on and ask if anybody has any questions for staff or Phil Boyle. Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for these guys?
I don't have any questions this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Dr. Bundy.
No questions.
Okay, and Margaret, do you have any questions?
I was just wondering who, who was going to provide the explanation of the, the height increase?
Okay.
I think, I think the architect, Wakis can do that for us if he likes.
Okay.
So the main reason for the height increase was more about the geometry of the architecture and because we went into more of a square shape and we reused the same slope as the roof below, it projected it up just slightly. It's not affecting any views at this point. I think it, it feels more aligned with the architecture below. It's not flat looking like the other architecture was looking and it gives us some more volume on the inside.
Okay, does that answer your question, Margaret?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so it's time for the applicant or whomever may speak for the applicant to come to the table. Who will that be?
Sure. So this is Mike Dell. I'll go first and then pass it over to Matt if that's okay?
That's absolutely great.
Okay, great. So it's good to see everyone again and thank you all for being here tonight. Phil's presentation nicely outlined the project and I know a lot of the relevant backgrounds provided at our last meeting. So I'll plan to keep my comments brief and then turn it over to Matt to walk through the plans. As you may recall from our March 9 Commission meeting, this project is very important to our family as it will provide necessary space for our growing family and Kristy's mother, who will be having extended visits with us very soon. As Phil noted in his report, we are delighted that we are presenting the revised project tonight with 100% support from our neighbors. The process to get to 100% support from our neighbors was not due to the actions of a single person. So I'd like to take just a few minutes to express appreciation and gratitude to the people that made that possible. And also so that the Commission can understand the collaboration process that has taken place since our meeting on March 9. First, I would like to thank Krista Scoville, who I see here tonight, our neighbor at 13 Morning Star, for the time, energy and expense that she put into finding a compromise project that she could support. I'd also like to thank Michael Rex, the architect that Krista engaged to help us find a compromise. Promptly following the meeting on March 9, Michael and Krista worked together and presented to us a detailed handwritten drawings of revised plans with the addition move to the center of the house. We recognized that Michael and Krista were thoughtful in their proposal and that it represented a true compromise, a plan where concessions were made by both parties, but largely captured the goals and desires of both parties. And the plan that we're presenting tonight that Phil went through is substantially identical to what Michael and Krista proposed. I'd also like to thank Phil Boyle, who has served as an excellent resource to all parties throughout the process and provided a comprehensive staff report, which nicely summarizes the number of changes and revisions to the project. I'd like to thank our contractor, who on short notice was able to erect a preliminary set of story polls so that Krista could assess the view impact prior to the full story polls. And then when some minor changes were made to the design, was able to erect or revise that of polls on short notice in order to meet our desired timing to be here tonight. I'd also like to thank Matt, who will speak shortly, who was gracious enough to work with another architect on this project and collaborate on a tight timeline to help us reach this compromise. Were able to finalize a revised design just three weeks after our last meeting in order to meet the story poll deadline. And Matt completed a shadow study shortly thereafter. This was a lot of work that we appreciate. And lastly, I'd like to thank the Commission for the suggested redesign and for the consideration of the new application. We're very excited about moving forward and I'll, I'll turn it over to Matt now just to walk through the revised plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I just have to give you a pre-warning. I am not in my home and the wifi in the house that we're staying in down in Palm Springs is a little weak. So if I cut it in and out, just bear with me. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So we, like last time, I'll walk you through the, the plans and show you some renderings. Phil, once again, did a great job explaining exactly what we have done to compromise in this plan. And I think we all came to a great, great solution. So we're all happy with it. To get the architecture speaks great to the neighborhood and the layout is very similar to what we had before. So it's, it's a win-win for everyone. As Phil showed you the site plan, we shifted the entire addition to the center or near center of the existing structure. And we reduced it by 30 square feet. This is the new proposed lower level, just to show you where the stairs have shifted. They were up here closer to the living room and they have shifted down closer to the bedrooms, not causing any additional structural requirements. Actually working better for us in this new location, giving us a larger living room. And then on the second floor, we get a very similar layout, albeit shifted to the center and rearranged a little bit. We still get the very similar sized rooms. Very nice primary bedroom, very nice bathroom, giant closet, nice sized craft room. Little inefficiency in the center, but nothing that we can't deal with. This shows you, this plan here just shows you how the walls align with the lower level. So you can see that the structural is actually going to be a little bit more simplistic. This far right wall is lined up directly with the wall below. There's a jog in the, the wall here in the back on the first floor, but that's just the nature of the architecture of this building. But most of the walls are lining up with a little discrepancy on this wall, but nothing that we can't deal with. And then straight along this, we have a straight run of alignment all the way through. So it really, the new layout, it works out well with, with the existing floor layout below as far as walls are concerned. With the elevations, you can see our new proposed front elevation. We are, just to note a couple of things that Phil didn't note is that we did pull back the eve in the front so that we could connect the top and bottom. So it looks like a cohesive building, like it was intentional to do this, to, to have the second floor. And we're pulling the, we're pulling the same materials onto the addition under the second level as we find in the first level. So it brings some cohesiveness throughout the architecture. And as you can see with the roof line, we're, we're matching the same slope as we have below, which brought that up slightly. The reason we had it lowered before was because we were trying to work with the view and pull that, that roof down. But now that we've completely shifted it out of the view, we'd like to have that similar slope roof and give you a better volume in that space. This is the north elevation of the back where the view was impacted. And I'll show you in a rendering, I compared the two additions and you'll see where there's a big impact of less of an impact on the view. East elevation. We've got the higher windows, high transit windows in the master. This is in the hallway, so we can get some natural light in there. And then in the craft room, we do have standard windows for egress, which are required. So we, we can't do the higher transit windows on the side. We do need some sort of egress out of those windows. So it's a requirement for code. Then on the west elevations, these two windows are in bathrooms, so they will be frosted. And I believe that that was a, also a request from the neighbor. Ralph, the neighbor on the opposite side of the side. And so this is the original design, as you can see. Wanted to show you what, just remind you what it looked like before. And this is what we're proposing now. So much better looking building, I, I believe. Speaks great with the rest of the architecture, works well in, in the neighborhood. Straight on view of it. This is the back. And you can see here the difference, it's a significant difference between having it completely impact the view to having it not impacted whatsoever. And then just a shot of the side. And then materials are exactly what we had proposed before. The only difference material that we didn't show on this board, but it would be matching the same type of siding below and bringing it onto the top. And that's it for me for now. Welcome any questions that you may have, but can address.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Margaret, do you have any other questions for the architect here?
I don't. No, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Dr. Bundy, how about you?
No, I think the new design looks very nice, looks very integrated, centered. I, I think it's a real plus.
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so does the applicant have anybody else that they wish to present for, for their presentation?
No, it's just me and Matt. I think we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Okay. Now, we'll go directly to a public comment for this. And I know that the primary leading contender is Miss Scove. So you have plenty of time. You won't be limited by the three minutes, but I'd love to hear your story.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the Dells and Phil's comments, just saying thank you to everyone for the collaboration and with Matt and Michael Rex as well, the architects. Obviously, it was a difficult process, but you know, I really appreciate everyone coming to the table and, and collaborating and coming to a an agreement. So I, I really appreciate that. And I just, in, in terms of the planning commission, I just also wanted to say thank you for hearing my concerns at, at the beginning. It was, you know, when the first set of story polls went up, I'm not going to lie, from an emotional standpoint, I was in tears because I was looking at my backyard and what was going to happen to my personal day-to-day home. And so I'm really grateful that we're able to come to this place. So just thank you again, and I appreciate it. And I'm glad that the Dells are going to be able to move forward with a home that they're excited about. And I'm happy that you're, we were able to preserve a majority of my view. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Well said. All right. We go to see if there are any other hands up or anybody who has emailed into publiccomment@tcmail.org.
Thanks, Peter. I don't see any hands raised. And no, nobody either.
Well, that's disappointing. So okay. We'll wait just a beat here, but I think that's it. And we'll close it to public comment at this time and we'll take it back to the Commission. So I will start with you, Margaret, and hear what you have to say about your thoughts on this application.
Um, my first impression is I think this is actually an improvement in just the look of the building. I like it. You know, probably 100 times better than the look of the original idea. To me, it looks more balanced. It, it looks better just on the block of houses. And so I think that's great. And I really think it's was a tremendous compromise on, on both, both sides. I, you know, I do recognize the fact that there is still some view that's changed. And I also recognize the fact that it's difficult to have to compromise after you get your heart set in one direction and probably expensive for both sides of the whole situation. But I think that it's, it's just great that at least everybody got something and everybody lost something too. It just works. It just worked out beautifully and it's hap, it, it makes this sounds like very Mr. Rogers, but it makes for a very happy neighborhood when you can kind of do something like that. And I'm, I'm really glad. You know, I'm really glad to see it from all points of view and I could make all the findings.
Thank you, Margaret. That's important. Question, can you make the findings? So, all right, Dr. Bundy.
Well, a lot of time, effort and money spent in getting to this point, but a much better resolution than it appeals to the council. I can make all the findings.
Absolutely true. And Mr. Rizzo, what are your thoughts?
I thought it was a very substantial improvement. I'm glad that, that we're, we have a happy ending here. And everybody worked together to, I think, come up with a better design. I, I do like the way the materials come down in the second floor. Looks like it's a lot more balanced and it feels, it's not, when it's done, it's not going to feel like it was an addition. It's going to feel like it was built, it was built that way. And I'm really glad Ms. Skull has her view back. It seems like everybody's going to get what they want. The increase in height doesn't bother me one bit. I think having the two, the two roofs in the same, at the same pitch also brings some continuity to design. With that said, I, I could make the findings as well.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. You know, this is a remarkable effort, I, I think, on all your parts to come to the table. And I commend you guys for doing this because it's not easy to sort of swallow and say, okay, we've got to make some changes. So you did that. And this stands as an example of what can happen when people do come together. And everybody says, okay, what we had is, is not going to work. So what will work? So that's just fabulous. And I support you in your project and I support the findings of this application. So with that said, do we hear a motion for this one?
I, I can make the motion. In the matter of design review application, PL-2020-0100 dash DRC for an 801-foot square foot second level addition and modifications to an existing single-story home at 22 Eptide Passage. Resolution number 21-002. Move to approve.
A second.
Thank you, Margaret.
I'll take the role on that one. Start with Commissioner Bundy.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendel.
Aye.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Aye.
And Chairman Chase.
Aye. Mr. Boyle.
The appeal statements following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or a meeting. Any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department and also on the town's website. And there's a $300 filing fee.
Thank you very much. All right, kids, go forth. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Our second item tonight is the 10 Mansina Court application. This is a design review and variance application number PL 2021-005 for an 868-square-foot second level addition, a 100-square-foot addition and modification to the first level and a variance to approach into the front setback six feet based on the unusually shaped lot at 10 Mansina Court. Mr. Boyle, this is yours to represent as well. You're muted. You're muted.
Okay, here I am, back again, sharing the screen again. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, I did want to make a clarification, there was a a typo in the notice, the, the encroachment is, is not, is not roughly six feet, it's roughly four feet. And I will describe that in the, in that, that's how the staff report is written as well, so I apologize for the the error in the notice. So this is a designer view and variance application for ten man's need a court. And go through my presentation here, so man's needed court is at the end of Man's Nina Avenue. Kind of up above the library, and if people know that area, at the end of Oakdale Avenue. Sort of, it's roughly southwest of the library overlooking Metta Suite Drive and Towne Place Drive. Located here in the, in the center. The proposed site plan, very unusual lot, very unusual site. Lot going on in this site plan here, but basically what, what I'd like you to focus on is the, the checkered pattern, roughly rectangle here in the center. And that is the area of the second level addition, so we placed over the single story home, the single story home is a relatively large rectangle here. So the second story dash addition is placed relatively equal distance from the front elevation closest to man's needed court and from the back elevation here. Existing and proposed first level floor plan, just a minor change to the first level to accommodate the new stair. This is, this is the entryway here today, man's needed court is here on, on the left, here's your single car garage just to orient you. So that the modifications to the first level will be to, to reconfigure this area here. Using the same stairs that exist today and the same porch, but they're adding stairs to the second level. These are interior stairs, but they're literally putting them on the, on the side of the building that exists today. And they're also adding the elevator right next door, right, right at the same location, so there are two ways to, to access the, the second level via stair or elevator. And those are really the, the extent of the floor plan changes to the first level. The proposed second level will consist of a master, a master suite. And then a smaller bedroom. Bath, and then the family room here. In addition to that, there will be balconies on the north side. As well as balconies on the south, south side, taking advantage of, of the natural light and certainly the view to the north. In terms of elevation, going, you know, from a relatively simple, low level, low sloped roof building that exists today, this is the view from the street, and if you drove up there, you, this is pretty heavily vegetated over this part of the building, but you can certainly see the front, you can certainly see the single car garage. So again, the addition will, will be placed above, stepping back from this elevation. The architect will, will speak to the the barn design and feeling that they wanted to bring to this building, which is relatively nondescript in its architecture. And so that's why they use the particular pitched roof and the cupola elements on top. And here you can see the two, the two covered balconies on, on either side, north and south. And then moving to the east elevation or, you know, straight, you know, facing the backyard. Again, pretty similar in terms of the orientation and the look of the second level. Instead of using clear story windows here to minimize any, any view impacts to the neighbors that are, that are up the hill and also quite heavily vegetated, and also those neighbors provided letters of support. So no, no objections in terms of views or privacy from any of the neighbors, and I think it was designed in a way to try to minimize that, again, jumping back to this one, the second level, you know, windows really relatively small to try not to overpower or, you know, have privacy impacts to folks across the street. Or slightly down the hill. And now jumping to back over to, to the south elevation, this is an elevation that's kind of facing into the hillside as you continue to drive up man's needed court, kind of wrap around the property. This is what you'd see if you looked left, which again is heavily, heavily vegetated at this point. And again, taking advantage of using a deck with a door and windows to provide some outdoor space to the, for the second level. In terms of exterior materials, I included a material copy, sorry, a photograph of the materials board, they're using horizontal, so they're using vertical siding. Again, to provide a little variety to the horizontal siding that exists below, matching windows and, and doors, and then matching pink color as well. And matching roof materials. Existing and proposed north elevation, this is where the main entrance is here. You kind of, you walk in from the street, you walk along the side of the building into the main entrance, so that main entrance is going to be enhanced, as I said, to provide for the stair and the elevator, and so you've got the stair here, some storage down below, large window here at the top of the stair. And then a smaller deck looking north at this point. In terms of the, the numbers in the project summary, increasing floor area ratio from, by approximately ten percent. But still, under the, the maximum, which is forty percent. Lot coverages is slightly increasing, meets all the setbacks of, of course, well, instead of sorry, meets all the setbacks, except, of course, the front setback, which is what the variance they're asking for, and again, it's, it's a an encroachment of approximately four feet. Currently, the building does not meet the front setback, and that will, that nonconformity will, will slightly increase. Code requires twenty feet, meets all the other setbacks, meets the height requirement going from fifteen feet to twenty-nine with a code maximum of thirty. The cupola is allowed, part of our code talks about cupolas and other architectural features are allowed to exceed up to ten feet above the code requirement, so you're allowed, the scupla could be as tall as forty feet if it wants to be. It's, it's gonna be thirty-three feet tall, and one stipulation is that cupola or architectural element cannot exceed ten percent of the area of the building, and so this is quite, you know, much less than that. No change in parking, they have one covered space and one uncovered space, and as I mentioned in the, in the staff report. A couple of years ago, they received a variance to allow that second parking space to exist in the front setback. When they did in addition to the rear of the home off of the, the master suite, and so they have a they have a conforming lot in terms of parking at this point. Neighborhood response and outreach, they reached out to all the neighbors and, and everyone provide, all, all these folks, I should say, provided letters of support. These are the most immediate neighbors and the ones that, that I believe would be most impacted and did not receive any comments or, or concerns from other neighbors. They, they also, these, the applicants put the story polls up quite early, so I think they were up for probably a total of, a total of four weeks or close to four weeks, so that everybody had plenty of time to observe the addition. Some pictures of the story polls, both of these are from, from the street, more or less standing at the middle of man's needed court. That's one in the upper left showing again that, that element, this would be the new front door area here. And then to the right, here's your single car garage and the, the element here, this, this long piece here is, is representing the height of the cupola, the maximum height. But the cupola itself obviously is not that, not that long. It was just to provide that for hard to make story polls for just the cupola. A couple more site photos. Here's your existing front door, so this is your north elevation looking up from, from the yard. And this is from the, looking from the street, this is the back right corner, looking west at where the, the second level would, would be. Talking about the variance and, and Steph's ability and, and discussion of meeting the findings to, for the variance. This is again, very unusual lot, spoke with public works and a number of people have no idea why this red spike was created for some reason, so you know, a normal lot would, would follow along a man's needed court with, you know, red, green, red. That is not the case, this lot, you know, jets into here for some strange reason and then comes back out and then continues along, along man's needed court. If this was a quote unquote normal lot line, then their, their setbacks would be the green line here. And because of the spike, their setback is jumping way into here. And so, you know, here, once again, the, the existing single car garage, which is original with the home, I believe. Is built in the setback, the lower level of this area is built in the setback. And the new addition will be, will be slightly within the setback as well. The, you know, talked to the applicant quite a bit about it in terms of design and, and construction, and like some other variances we've had. Having the ability to line up walls and makes it much easier and much less expensive and a much better design to continue that encroachment into the setback, they're not, their encroachment isn't increasing on a horizontal level, it's increasing on a vertical level. And this, this black area here is roughly forty-four square feet. And again, this distance here is, is roughly, roughly four feet, obviously varies, because it's not a rectangle. So that's the, the explanation and the discussion of, of the variance finding, clearly a, a unique and unusual lot in, in town. And based on that, staff is able to make all the design review findings and all the variance findings for this application with an addition of eight hundred and sixty-eight square feet and recommend approval of the attached resolution. Thank you. Did I lose everybody?
I'm here.
Okay. Thought I put you all to sleep. Never done that before, no.
Peter, I think you're muted. I think he's.
All right, you're right, I apologize, yeah. Bob, do you have any questions for staff out of this?
Yeah, Phil, just one question, I think there's a, in there, the storage shed that's just next to the single car garage, did that factor into anything at all?
The storage shed next to the single car garage, they do have a storage shed, I mean, right in here.
I thought it was on the other side of the garage.
There, there, well, there's a storage shed here, and that, that one's gonna be, that's gonna be relocated, they say that in their plans here, it's relocated closer and away from the setback to conform. Yeah, but I'm not aware of any storage shed next to the garage, we have the, we have the surface parking space and then the single car garage, which is almost attached to the house.
Okay, yeah, this they, I, I think that I was confusing a shed on something else with the trailer parking pad that's there.
Okay.
And I still don't know how they managed to get that trailer in there. It looks like a Herculean task to maneuver that in, but it's there.
No. Yeah. I have a picture, I think I have a picture of that in the staff report, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Bundy. Margaret, do you have any questions for staff?
Was there any change to the landscape?
There isn't, and thank, thank you for bringing that, that up, Commissioner Bendel, there, there was an email exchange. Chairman Chase raised the concern regarding the vegetation on man's needed court in general, and there was a response from Fire Chief Martin regarding that and that they will be out in, I think he said, early May to do their vegetation removal or vegetation, you know, project and asking people to remove vegetation, and I forwarded that correspondence to the applicant, so they're aware of that, but to answer your question directly, there is no proposed change to the landscaping.
And just to get it straight in my mind, this is gonna, going to be, if, if the, if this plan is adopted, a six bedroom house?
Let's see. I don't think any of the bedrooms are changing, we have, we have four on the first, yes, we have four on the first level and two on the upper levels, so six, yes.
So six with a family room and a den?
Correct.
I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for staff?
Oh no, Phil, Phil answered my, the cupola question and, and that, just that weird, just wanted to see how staff interpreted, interpreted the that weird jog in a, in the in the plot plan, so I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, somebody's steel to light broke that day, I don't know what the story is for that. Okay, so now we're at the point where the applicant can make their presentation. Who's going to speak for the?
Hi, good evening, hi, this is Nairn and my wife Jennifer. Thank you so much for, for your time this evening, and also for the compliments on the airstream parking. I use it as an opportunity to avoid having to change my young kid's diapers, saying, honey, I have to park the airstream, so. So just a little background, the purpose of the second story addition is actually to house my elderly mother. She was literally in lockdown in Arizona with no family, with COVID, I'm sure you can all imagine them, sure you have family members also was in, was not, not doing well, and so given that we're here and our two children, we have five and two year old daughters, our grandchildren are here. You know, we wanted to, you know, give her in the twilight of her, of her years place to live where she can still feel she has a, a, a home, but also be an active part of our lives as she is now, and take her meals with us and just, you know, enjoy her time whilst at the same time have an opportunity to you know, have her, her own, her own space and her own ability to go in and out, at least, you know, so long as she's, you know, physically able and hence the hence the elevator to, you know, to accommodate to her as, as she gets on in years, hopefully for, for a long time. I'll, I'll, I'll be done in a minute, while I'll defer a little bit more to some of the design elements to our architect consultant, but the idea of the, of the, of the, of the home, I think Phil, you know, very well explained. It's a fairly simple looking home, and it was an opportunity to give it a sort of barn farmhouse look. We want to do something, just, just make it look more interesting, more appealing, visually appealing. Yet at the same time, try and keep the theme of the look and the style and the colors consistent with the existing structures, so try and marry some existing looks with, with a way to, to try and, and make it more of a, more of a sort of barn farmhouse, hence the, the, the elevation, the capola. And the, just the overall look, look and feel of the structures whilst the same time trying to be sensitive to, to all the neighbors, to make sure that we are not impairing any views or obstructing light and such, so this was really the, the the main sort of purpose and point of what drove this, this this, this second floor construction. this, this second floor construction. I think I'm, so that's, that's the idea. And I know that, um, our architect consultant is on the line as well. If you have any questions, Fran, I don't think, I don't see her on video, uh, but, but she's also on if you have specific questions about any of the, uh, the design elements. Uh, that's so pretty much expresses the, uh, the purpose of the design behind the, um, the addition.
For some reason, my, um, my video has been disabled. So my cat's representing me.
That should work for you, Fran.
In that button and I couldn't get my cat off the screen. Thank you all. This is my very first Zoom planning commission meeting. Um, I'm only a consultant anymore. I don't really practice architecture per se, but I've worked with the Margulites over the last couple of years on several additions. I personally do not like second story additions, but there was really no other solution on the site. We exhausted every possible location for a little cottage for Neer's mom, who I have met and been working with and is a lovely woman and very excited about this. So putting an elderly person upstairs, again, not my top choice, but it was the only place to go, the only place on the lot. And so we took the opportunity to take a house that is kind of a low slung box that's pretty buried, almost in a hollow as you drive. I don't know if all of you had a chance to drive around it, but you, you kind of come up and over the house as you drive along Manzanita Court. So the second story is actually going to have a lot more presence than the first story did. And if anyone at all is impacted by this house, I would say it's mostly the Margulites because it's a north elevation that will really be the only fully viewed elevation. Um, I would typically match roof slopes. But it's such a low slung roof and really, sorry, Neeran Jennifer without charm. So they really said, you know, what can we do to create something that has a little bit more interest? And they were both attracted to kind of a barn farm, you know, they have this beautiful sight and it seemed to be an appropriate, uh, design for that. Um, what else can I tell you? It's, you know, it's smack in the middle. We're trying to meet all the setbacks. And as you, oh, as Phil very eloquently talked about, I, I hadn't really interpreted the setback that way with the curve, but that makes a lot more sense. Who knows why that was done that way? Um, the balconies are so that Neer's mom can spend a little time outside without going, you know, up and down the elevator. She's like loves to, you know, have plants and things like that. And the extra bedroom, um, I know one of the commissioners asked about the bedrooms is for a potential caretaker at some point because she is, um, you know, getting up there and will be on her own floor. So I think that about covers anything I have to say, but, um, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for Fran?
Uh, yeah, Fran, I was just curious on the vertical boards, is, is that going to be a tongue in groove or some type of board and bat and look?
Bat and, uh, I'm going to suggest a hardy plank because they make a really nice smooth bat that goes with, with, you know, you use big boards and then just use the bats. It's not like the old fashioned board and bat where it's a board and bat that.
Yeah, got you. And the.
We, so we have to be, uh, you know, uh, fireproof on our material.
Sure. The, uh, cupola that acts as a light well?
Yes.
Okay.
Originally we thought about having it as a little loft for the kids, but, um, it got a little too big. So I'm trying to create some interest, you know, the grandkids are going to be visiting grandma and having something fun for them to go to, but.
No, it's nice touch. No, no further questions.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bundy. Margaret Bendel, how about you?
Um, I'm curious about the, uh, height of the roof and, uh, I mean, it's almost at the top of the height limits. And it looks to me like a very steep roof line. So how did that decision come about?
Again, trying to give, you know, the, the low slung roof is so flat. It's, I mean, it almost reads as a flat roof. And I think we were trying to get a little bit more turn, a little of that more barn like, barn like structure and the building's quite wide. So, you know, when you do, it's, it's not that steep of a roof, but by the time you get to the middle of a, I forget how. I need to pull it up on my computer. Hold on a second. Um, when you get to, let's see, how wide is that? I'm sorry. Thirty. Sorry, I should have this thirty something feet, even though the roof slope isn't that steep, you start getting pretty high. But I'm sorry, I'm not.
Your slope is six and 12.
Right, which isn't that steep of a slope. You know, I think with a farmhouse or barn type building, if you get any flatter, it starts looking a little bit more like a tract house or, you know, or a craftsman style house, which has a lower slope. I mean, a lot of them have more like eight and 12 or even 10 and 12, but part of the height is just because of the width of the building.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Mr. Rizzo, what are your questions for Fran?
Um, Fran, could you go back a little bit to why, uh, you might not have increased the pitch on the other volumes to kind of match?
Well, money. I mean, yeah, that would be great. That's putting a whole new roof on both building. I mean,
Yeah, you have all low ceilings in, in the existing building now?
No, the, um, we did an addition at the back a couple of years ago at the master suite and that does have a vaulted ceiling that, but the front of the house, oh, I think eight foot.
I think so. Yeah, it's pretty low.
Yeah. In the perfect world with an unlimited budget, I totally agree. It would be create the same roof pitch on the front and the back. Although I can kind of rationalize it in that you don't really see it from anywhere.
Yeah. Um, did, are you got, since some of these windows are getting replaced on the, on the first floor? Or that's just new windows on the east elevation? I was just curious if you're going to be redoing the siding on the, on the lower floor or, or just, um?
We are not, yeah, we're not replacing any windows on the main floor. We're adding a couple of windows at that whole little entry stair. But all the existing windows are, we're, we kind of worked hard to keep the existing bedroom windows.
My last question is, um, the cupola, is, is there a reason why it's extra high? It seems like it could still work if it was a few feet lower. It just seems like there's an extra two feet on it.
Well, it'd be hard to get a window by the time you have a peak and then enough flashing below the sill and uh, put a window, if you look on the, um, west elevation.
The west, okay.
See that little window that's placed there in the peak of the cupola? It's kind of, it's about six inches above the peak of the roof below. And it's maybe six inches below, there's going to be a header there. So it's, it's about as tight as it can be without losing the window.
So I'm looking at the west elevation and I don't see, um, any windows on the cupola.
Oh God, am I?
The new west exterior elevation?
Phil, do you mind putting it on?
It's on the screen.
Is it on?
No, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my screen. Um, yeah, the, the west elevation's got a, got a.
Oh, you're right. Well, it did used to have a window on there. Which was the reason.
Yeah, the north and south elevations have the windows. Yeah.
Yeah.
North and south have windows.
You know?
To be all the way around or?
Well, that's funny. Something changed in the design. As I said, I'm an architectural consultant. This is not my staff. Originally, we did have a little, we had little windows on the two gable ends and, and you're right, it could get lowered. I don't know, Neeran and Jennifer, did you guys decide to get rid of those end windows?
No, I, I think, I think we just missed, to be honest with you, it's supposed to have windows. So.
Yeah.
So are, are there the same windows all the way around it or is it just, are there?
Yeah, it's supposed to be, you know, matching all the way around.
Like, you know, like those little, I call them, it's a cupola, but it's like a little where the windows ring all the way around, brings light down below.
I have one in my house. I, um, okay. So that, that, that was my comment because I didn't see any windows there.
They're supposed to be.
Still come down a little bit and have a sill if anybody had an issue with it. But it's a nice touch. I don't really have any other, you know, design questions. Peter.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Rizzo. I appreciate it. Um, for my part, um, I echo some of the other questions, uh, primarily regarding the roof pitch. And you've made a justification for it by, uh, explaining how the client actually wanted to have certain look to the addition. And I think I heard you say that because the first floor of the house is so low slung that you don't, they don't, those pictures don't stand out as much as they might on the page. Is that fair to say?
That's very fair to say. And I think because the way the street wraps around the south elevation and the vegetation sits on the north elevation, you really, you know, drawn elevations are a little deceptive because everything gets flattened out. So, I mean, even as I'm looking at them, like, oh, but you're not really seeing those two roofs in relationship to each other. So, um, and I think from the side, you're not going to really pick up on that roof pitch the way that you would at the front or back. And at the front, you really see it. And at the back, the only people that can see it are the, the, the Margulites if they stand on the hill and look down on it.
I, I would love to hear the Margulites to talk more about the, their idea of this structure as a barn and so forth, just to communicate with us what their passion about it is. Or perhaps you speak more to it. I, it doesn't matter. I would love to hear more.
Well, I, I could say one thing. I, I think, um, like I said, we've done two remodels to the house and the exterior has never really been something that they've loved. And when this whole, um, situation came up of needing to house Neer's mom and the final solution being the upstairs really being the only place that made sense. They approached me and said, how can we make this house a little more interesting, give it some charm, give it a little bit of quirkiness? Have it, you know, be something that they liked on the outside as opposed to this kind of low slung rectangular. I, I, I don't know really what style I would call it. Um, so I think that's where, and we, you know, played around with ideas and I think Jennifer had a couple of images that she loved that. One was a cupola, wasn't it? Or I, I can't remember how that even all came about. A little somewhat of an organic process of bouncing ideas back and forth. Yeah, we, the house is red, you know, it's kind of farmhouse red and, uh, I don't know, it just kind of over time, kind of grew into a little bit of a farmhouse kind of feel as far as our, um, vegetation around the house. We kind of kept it kind of a little uh, farmhousey, the interior, if you, um, is a little bit more, uh, a little bit more rustic farmhouse. And so the house is red and it just, it just, it just, you know, speaks to, uh, kind of an appropriate style that kind of keeps the, uh, you know, keeps the consistency.
Thank you. I appreciate that expression. All right.
I have one more. Are, are you going to replace the roof on the older buildings? Portions of the house?
Um, you know, that, that's really, I think more an issue as to the age of the roof when, you know, and the roof, probably will need replacing at some point in the near future. If you're the slate, you know, presently it's okay. Um, but, uh, but there's no, there's no immediate plan to, to change it in association with this addition.
You said the roof is slate right now.
It's, um, I think we had it in the materials board. It's like, um,
No, asphalt chingle.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you. Now, uh, at this point in time, uh, if there's no other presentation from the applicant, then we'll, uh, open this up to a public comment. So I open the public comment and if you have a comment to make, you can email it to publiccomment@tcmail.org or raise your hand on your screen. Is there anybody doing so, Tracy?
Thank you, Chair Chase. Yes, we have, uh, uh, sorry if I mispronounced your name, Le- Lenea. I'm going to allow you to talk and you want to unmute yourself and go right in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it's a nice looking plan. Um, that cupola is high and because it's red, the house is red, it's going to kind of look like an old schoolhouse without the bell in it. So I think, I mean, I, I would think that cupola could come down and look a little better. It's, it's going to look kind of cartoonish to my estimation. That's not critical to me. The critical element from my perspective is parking. A six bedroom house with a single car garage and a trailer and two cars. I can tell you that almost every delivery that goes to that house backs down the hill instead of turning around up there because there's nowhere for them to pull in, turn around. And so they back down the hill and some of them keep backing down the hill. And that's half of them or a third of them and the rest of them back into my driveway. So six bedroom house, those girls are going to grow up and they're going to have cars. The mother, I don't know if she drives at this time, but she has a caregiver, that caregiver will be driving. So I think that the, um, parking and turnaround up there needs to be addressed somehow. I don't know if that means that that darling little trailer doesn't live there anymore, but it does seem like that's a lot of commotion for my house to absorb. And I do absorb it. I know that the, uh, Margulites don't know that I do. I know they're not aware of that because they don't see the cars going back down the hill and into my driveway, which comes right up to my kitchen window with that high pitched beeping sound, which is, you know, can be up to 15 to 20 times a day based on all the cars that are coming and going, gardeners, maids, delivery people, UPS, FedEx. It's a lot. So I like your architecture and I like your family, but I don't like all this, all the cars coming into my driveway. And aside from me putting up a fence and a gate in front of my house, uh, what can happen to make this better?
Okay, we've run out of time for you. So thank you. Tracy, anyone else?
Um, I don't see anyone else, um, with a hand raise. Um, I will check email. Um, and no emails have been received.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we'll, uh, close public comment then. And we'll take it back to the commission. So, um, commissioners, do you have any questions? I'll start with, uh, you, Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for anybody after hearing or listening to the presentation? I just want to check in with you.
Questions.
Okay. Margaret?
I, I have some concerns, but I don't have any questions.
Okay. And Mr. Rizzo?
Is, is there an opportunity? Is, is there an opportunity to increase an area to turn around or have another parking pad for the, for the airstream, so you can have a second spot? On the, on the, on the lot, it was really, I didn't want to get, go, go on your property today, but.
Okay, so we're still in public comment, then if you're asking the, yours a question, that's all right.
Well, I, I thought you said you were asking us for a question.
Yeah.
That was my question to the.
Okay, that's fine. So go ahead and answer, yeah.
Yeah, let me just address that my mother doesn't drive, and God help us if she does. And there are no additional vehicles, we park presently, yes, the, the, the airstream is in, is off road, one car is, is in the drive, and then there's, there is actually a parking space, you know, right in front of the house, can't even be seen from probably look. We're very mindful of Linnea's comments and, and, you know, endeavor, you know, to, you know, to ensure that certainly anybody connected with us, that does not, you know, impair or disturb her, and obviously, thanks for sharing that, Linnea, if you can hear me, we, you know, we'll, we'll definitely keep an eye, and obviously, not every delivery is to us, there's two houses above us, and they come up, so, you know, we certainly don't have people coming, you know, fifteen times a day to our house, our gardeners come once every two weeks, and, you know, if we have at some point five, ten years, if we do have a caregiver for my mom, they'll use one of our existing cars, we don't plan on buying a car for a caregiver, when, when we have two cars that they can use. So, but in terms of addressing other opportunities on the lot, it's really, you know, we, you know, there's really no other opportunity on, on our space that I can think of. You know, I suppose at some point, if it became a real, real problem, you know, we can look at reconfiguring, you know, where the parking of the vehicles is, and, you know, we'll certainly be happy to work with, with our neighbor, to see how we can ameliorate any of these, you know, parking and backing up issues. Obviously, there's also public vehicles that come up the street, you know, we can't address every vehicle that comes up the street and how they back, back up, but certainly anybody who comes to us, and to our, to, is really a visitor or deliver to us, you know, we'll always be mindful to advise them to not, either try and turn around, up top, our, our neighbors at the top of the street are, are actually generally pretty amenable to people turning around up there, if they need to, or otherwise, just back, back down without, you know, going into a, so that's, that's our response.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Tracy, do you have any raised hands as follow up?
I, I do not.
Okay, very good, then we'll close it again, public comment is now closed. So back to the commissioners. So there goes Bob. Margaret, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this addition and remodel.
The, and the first, the biggest concern I have is just the outdoor safety issues, the, it looks very overgrown to me and dangerous as far as fire goes. I look at it, and I don't think there's, there, well, getting up and, and down that hill in my vehicle was difficult. I don't know how a fire engine would come up the hill with other cars trying to leave the hill. That, that problem we've had on these streets, to me, is accelerated by the parking issues where cars are parked, and the trailer is parked. And it, it looks very, very dangerous to me, just from my experience, coming up and down and trying to turn around, I, I see the, a lot of issues there. And the other concern I have is just, in my opinion, I think the pitch of the roof is too high for, for that whole area. I realize that, that it looks different from the, from onsite as to, to what a picture looks like, and I tried to kind of visualize it when I was there. But for, I, I like the style of a barn, I think the neighborhood is eclectic enough to, to have something that unique, and, and I think it's definitely has a very interesting personality to it, I like that. I just don't like how high the second story is. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Margaret. Dr. Bundy?
I liked the explanation of what every, what you were trying to go for with the style, you know, which does look like a western barn, and I think it is very reminiscent of that, and it really certainly does add character, you know, to an otherwise sort of low and boxy house. So I understand the difference in the pitch, and I think that what we're going to see, the limited ability to see it, which is as you drive by, is that the, the new addition, the second story, is really going to be the dominant theme that's there. I think it's a very nice effect. I think the cupola with the light well, and I would certainly agree with having the windows all the way around it as the right look that would, you know, look good from every angle. The, you know, parking in Corte Madera, drives in Corte Madera, whether it's Chapman Hill or this area on Manzanita or Christmas Tree Hill, the reason I always go to these sites in my MG is that I can always maneuver around and find a place to park and look at things. But anybody, anybody that lives on Christmas Tree Hill or some parts on Upper Chapman, that's what you have to live with, and that's what's there now, and, you know, that's just, that's just part of living there. So I think you want to be mindful of your neighbors and try to limit impacts on them, but the parking and the drive situation and the fire situation is what it is. So I, I, I think it's a, you know, nice addition.
Thank you, Bob. Then I come to you, Mr. Rizzo.
Just, you know, again, I'm, I'm just, I am very concerned about the parking. I didn't drive an MG up there, I drove a big old SUV and had to go into someone's park, back up into someone's yard up top. But I think that if, I'm struggling a little bit with the parking, to be honest with you, because if, if we would have gotten a, if this didn't have, if, if they didn't get the variance for the parking before, and they tried to get this all at once with six bedrooms, I think we would have been a lot more concerned about issuing the variance, but since it's, it's already got the parking space there, and I have no trouble with the other variants, I think that, that lot jog is no big deal. But I am, I am definitely concerned about the parking up there, and more or less, not even the parking, but just turn, turning around, having, having a company over. Definitely encourage the applicants to try to carve out some more parking or maybe redesign that area to accommodate, I mean, I think you could accommodate four or five cars here if you redid it, would make a huge difference in that area. But I do think that the, the new building's very attractive, I, I like that, I like the pitch of the roof. Again, I think the cupola might, might be able to come down still a little bit, it looks a little out of scale to me. But I'd love to see all those pitches the same, at six twelve, if, if that ever could happen. But other than that, I really don't, you know, it, it meets all the findings of our general plan, other than, other than that little variance of the, you know, the, the weird lot line, so, I mean, other than that, I think it's an attractive design.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. As I look at this, I first struggled with the different roof pitches on paper, until I went out there and looked at it, saw how low the lower first story is on the lot, and I, I really pondered what they were after. So hearing what you're after with the barn style and so forth, it makes sense, and I can see it now with the red building and all of that, and I can follow the logic, and I could follow a design thread, and I can see how it makes sense and why that kind of building would be enjoyable to be in. I think that the cupola could come down, maybe a foot at max, just enough to drop it a little bit from the east elevation, it looks quite high. But other than that, I think you guys, as neighbors, have to maintain parking for people up there. Parking on the street is not your responsibility, but to be a good neighbor is up there, and you didn't create that street or create the situation that exists up there, but you have to follow along and try to help the neighbors out and create, stop, keep yourselves from creating another problem by having too many cars parked along the street. So I can't fault you for the parking that exists on the street, or the narrowness of the street, or the vegetation management on the street, that's none of your doing, and the fire department will see to that in the, in the spring here shortly. So, you know, I think with the exception of the cupola dropping a little bit, I think I could make the findings for this, because I think it is kind of a fun project. So I'd come back to you, Dr. Bundy, and see if you're able to either, I think you're fine, if you want to try to make a motion for this and see where we stand, I'm not sure we'll get out of a
Sure.
tie here.
In the matter of design review and variance application, PL dash two oh two one dash oh 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 five for a eight hundred and sixty-eight square foot second level addition, a one hundred square foot addition and modification to the first level, and a variance to encroach into the front setback approximately four feet, based on the unusually shaped lot at ten Manzanita Court, this is resolution number twenty-one dash oh oh five, I move to approve.
Okay, with that said, Bob, would you be open to adding anything about the cupola dropping, or do you think it's fine where it is?
I, I think it's, I, I like the idea of having windows all the way around, which aren't shown in the diagram that we looked at, but as I understand it, that was the intention, and I would support that.
All right.
And certainly if the applicant chose to, to lower it, you know, I would be fine with that also. Recognizing that I, I, I don't think you can lower it too much, given the, the way it's designed.
Okay. I can, I can give way on that thought from the other two commissioners, do, will either of you second this motion?
Yes, I would second it, I'm not going to oppose it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take the role on that one then, so is there, can you just reiterate the motion as to the cupola, just so I have clarification on exactly what, what we're asking as part of the motion, is it as stated and as in, in the plans, obviously we want to, I think it was stated that the windows are actually intended to be all the way around the cupola, and that it may be lowered if possible by the design team?
Yes, if the applicant desires to lower it, I would accept that, and I would approve of the windows all the way around as described.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Bendel, so I'll take the role. Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bendel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo?
Yes.
And Chairman Chase?
Yes. All right.
And Phil, can you read the?
Yes, once again, appeal rights following any action of this public hearing, a decision by the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days of today. Applications again are available at the town hall as well as our website, and there's a three hundred dollar filing fee.
Thank you very much. I hope that this project works out well, and that you are successful in your ventures here, and your mother lives long and prospers. All right.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, before we go on to our next item, which is the business item, discussion of objective design and development standards toolkit, otherwise known as the odds toolkit, I would request that we take a ten minute break.
I concur.
Okay, thank you.
We'll reconvene at eight thirty, eight thirty-eight.
The next item on our agenda tonight is the discussion of objective design standards and design and development standards toolkit. So Adam and Martha, we've got a lot of talking to do.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, we really just wanted to put this item on the agenda based on some of the discussion we heard at the last meeting, that it would be helpful for the commissioners to touch on some, some of the potential questions or, or things that were still outstanding. We're happy to try to answer any questions that we can tonight, but really, I think what also would be maybe more useful is for us to get a sense of where the commissioners, what they would like to see our consultants touch on at the workshop at the next meeting. And so, you know, that was really the, the purpose of putting this on the agenda, I, I will turn it over to Martha if you want to add to that, but, you know, it's a discussion item with no formal action tonight, so.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, we're, you know, really looking for any comments or questions that the commission has on the toolkit that they would like to be covered at the upcoming workshop scheduled for April twenty-seventh. And again, that workshop is going to be both with the commission and then our working group members, one of which Patty is on the, the line tonight. And so we're interested in any kind of feedback you have, or any topics you want to be discussed at that, that workshop meeting, and the consultant Opticos Design will be presenting and going over a PowerPoint, will be providing kind of background information on the toolkit and how we got to where we are. There will also be an opportunity for, for questions from both the working group and commission, in addition to the members of the public as well.
And I think as we discussed, when we had this item on the agenda for, basically, we came to the commission, I think it was in February, the end of February, to discuss how staff sees implementation taking place, and it being sort of two phases. One of the primary things we want the consultants to help, or, or to express and explain, and along with staff at the next meeting on April twenty-seventh, is to explain sort of, explain the, the mapping of zones in the different areas of Corte Madera, where multifamily housing is currently permitted by the general plan and/or zoning ordinance. And so we've actually just met with them earlier today and had that conversation about really what we're looking for is some, some of their recommendations as to which zones would be mapped in, in different parts of Corte Madera, and we, we've seen some of that, but we'd like that to be extended to really all areas where multifamily housing is permitted in Corte Madera. And that's really because, as we've talked about in phase one of our implementation, that we're really implementing this in response to state legislation that would allow a private developer to propose multifamily housing in any of these locations in town. So it would be good, and we want to get sort of the objective design standards in place for that purpose. If that makes sense. And that's what we're, I think Martha and I discussed, we think that, that will probably be a big chunk of what the presentation is about in two weeks, and it's them explaining the rationale as to why they've chosen certain, certain zones for different areas of town.
I'd also add, Opticos Design have designed a lot of these types of, of standards and codes, so they, they're very they're very eloquent when they speak to kind of form-based codes and and standards and they're just a really great resource and they can explain things much more eloquently than than Adam and I can on this topic. So um you know, I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the commission to really get some of those questions answered, technical questions, and I think they'll provide a, you know, will be a great resource. So if that, if there's, if the commissioners want to raise questions either for me and Adam or raise questions that you'd like to see addressed at the upcoming workshop.
So you don't really have um more presentation regarding this item tonight. Uh it stands for itself. Uh we've seen it. And so with that said, um and that you want that feedback, I'll go directly to the commissioners here first and see who wants to bring anything up if they have something to bring up. Um Dr. Bundy?
Well, I guess I'm getting the sense that for all districts that are multi-fa- allow multifamily housing, we're going to use these form-based zones uh that is going to be up to you to designate uh so that developers will know what T number they're in uh when they're making a proposal. Just in in general, looking at it, uh one thing that that uh did come to mind that I'd heard about before, uh page sixty-eight talking about uh separate uh building rental agreements from parking space rental. And I I think that makes sense, but I just don't know how that's done. Uh you know, how how the uh the owner of the property uh does that? And if a resident does not want a parking space because they don't need one, don't have a car, does that get rented to somebody else in the building that has two cars? How does that work?
Yeah, I I think that's exactly right. Actually, Tam Ridge is a good example. They're actually operating on the same basis um where, you know, they've built a certain number of spaces um and then they they do have a provision where, and this was basically because we wanted them to at least offer one parking space for every unit in that apartment complex. I think they have a hundred and eighty units and I think there was about two hundred and ninety-five parking spaces. Um and actually, I think a good twenty of those parking spaces were for the retail business. So even less, about two, maybe two seventy for the residential units. So clearly not two parking spaces for every unit. But they, we did actually want them to at least offer uh tenants as part of their lease. Um well, it was it was to uh offer it to tenants there. Um however, if the tenants didn't want it, then it would be back, basically could be offered to another uh another apartment rental uh owner. And and they were separated. They they do actually rent the spaces separate from the actual leases for the apartments at Tam Ridge. So I think it's, it would be a similar model where um at least as they're talking about it, um uh where that could, that could take place. Is that, is that sort of answer your question? I mean, it 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 is able to be done by property management companies for apartment complexes, yeah?
Yeah, no, I just, I wasn't sure exactly how uh that would work out, but I that makes, that makes sense. Uh they uh I I did have a question, uh sixty, on page sixty-nine E, uh there was a requirement that a a minimal amount of impervious material uh in in certain areas was required, and I would think that we would want pervious material as much as possible on any of these projects. I I didn't understand the 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 uh necessity or the requirement for the uh minimum number of uh a minimum percentage of impervious material. And I think that meant, you know, driveways, walkways.
Can you guys answer that? Otherwise, I will answer it.
Glad to hear it, yeah.
I I think that they're saying that um with impervious material in a parking area, you want it to be impervious in a parking area rather than pervious in a parking area. So they're saying that a minimum percentage XX percent would have to be strong enough to support vehicle and be impervious to uh rain and so forth to prevent it from getting soggy.
Well, I I know the uh uh Central Marin uh po- uh police authority, you know, their parking lot is all pervious material. They, I mean, there may be a couple of of spots on there for heavier vehicles, but uh you know, I I was under the impression the goal was to create parking with as much pervious material uh as possible, as long as you didn't have heavy trucks that were coming in there.
Okay.
A note of that and raise a top to goes um as something to discuss.
Okay, any other questions, Bob?
Yeah, on the seventy, page seventy-two, four parentheses, five. Uh I was trying to get my head around uh stacked parking in podium uh parking garage where it sounded like you could uh stack up to three cars in one space and uh I didn't understand that.
So that's why I'd say more common in um more urban areas, but it's it it's you see lifts that can um raise cars and create um you know, creates additional parking spaces in in garages. I don't think, we don't have any examples um that I that I know of.
Yeah, I guess I'm familiar with a lift that would allow two cars to park in one spot. I this uh three cars uh
Yeah, that that's, I I can uh back to my, the the New York City days, they have they have ones that do like six or seven or eight cars and they're all mechanical and they just stack them on top of each other, but uh it it's interesting because this did actually come up um with the Scandinavian Designs Proposal. If you may have recalled, they were short a few parking spaces and they were proposing at least two, two stacker lifts in the back of their uh to me, you know, and the, this was not, this was more for commercial purposes, but it's, I guess it's, you know, it's, 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 it's outlining an option that is available to um get more parking out of le- less space, uh less physical land area. So, but uh certainly something we can dive into more um. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to pull up the the actual toolkit to see if this, is this in specifically in the development standards, the like, like the landscaping section and the?
It's in the the parking section.
Page seventy, yeah, parking.
Okay.
And also as part of the customization discussion that we're going to be having, we'll talk about if we want to adopt all of these standards. There may be some standards that we determine aren't applicable um to Corte Madera and we may elect to remove certain sections from the the toolkit as well.
Okay, uh yeah, previously I had commented that uh they wanted fifteen gallon trees in the median strip and the beautification committee is giving out free trees in five gallon containers. And I I realize that this is meant to apply to a developer coming in with a by right ability to develop something, so this, you know, may may not be of a concern.
Oh, Bob, it's only for MG owners.
Oh. I I think I should get extra credit, uh you know, and take up less space.
Three cars instead of two cars, right? No.
Okay, no further questions.
Thank you, Bob. Um Margaret, do you have any questions for this?
I do.
Fire away.
Well, no, it's not so much a question. You said you uh us to suggest what we'd like to see at this uh next meeting. And so what I'd like to see first is that they give a roadmap an overview and then a roadmap of how to get through the various decisions that have to be made with maybe what would be most helpful to me uh maybe an example of, you know, just some kind of example, someone came to us on one day, this is what the toolbox that we use would look like, and it doesn't need to be complicated, but just how to get through all the decision making. Um and then I I I'm kind of like, we're doing this just in response to the state legislature. That we, so we wouldn't be doing it other than what the state has uh told us we have to do now. I'm not understanding that.
Well, that's, that's definitely a a big part of it. There's been a a lot of legislation in recent years that only requires jurisdictions to look at objective standards when evaluating certain housing projects, so that we currently don't have any objective standards or design guidelines in place or just more design guidelines in place, so it helps us to achieve the kinds of projects we want to see in Corte Madera. So that's a a big piece. Then another component is we do have goals in our general plan that promote um mixed-use housing development in certain areas of town. So it is kind of providing us the tools to achieve um those goals as well.
But but yeah, I mean, if you, the memo that we had in in the February meeting for the February meeting, I think went through, there's two different phases of this toolkit and how we intend to use it. And the first phase is literally just if somebody applies under SB thirty-five or SB three thirty and submits an application pursuant to those pieces of like of of state legislation. And there may be another, as we've, I think we've talked about, there's another one for single-family homes in the legislature uh or single-family zoning districts uh in the legislature right now that we, that then they are going to be subject to um uh essentially this, this type of uh these, these objective standards and they're going to have to comply with that. Um so that's the first phase and that's really what we're trying to accomplish right now is um is that limited sort of u- use of this toolkit for that purpose. Um and there may be um in the second phase, when we talk about actually incentivizing housing in certain locations in town, this may be useful in in that uh in that discussion as well, so that we can start to talk about what predictable forms and whatnot as well, but literally for the next workshop, we're going to be talking about really in response to those pieces of state legislation enacting these, this toolkit um to help us uh get predictable um development that we're going to have to allow.
So this next question I have, I I know, I don't mean it in a a negative way, and I don't mean it to put anyone on the spot. I'm just, what at at, we we and the planning commission have gone through a number of hours of this now, and I for myself have tried very hard to understand each piece of it. But in the end, what part is the planning commission ever going to play in using it? See, it's like, why are we doing this?
Well, because we do have to adopt it. It does have to get, in order to actually put it into place, we have to uh pull, we have to amend our municipal code to make it part of the rules that govern development in Corte Madera. Once it's in
Council does though, not us.
No, the planning commission uh for 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 modifications to the zoning ordinance. The planning commission is required by state law to make a recommendation or weigh in, have a public hearing um on those those zoning zoning amendments. And then the recommendation goes to town council and town c- council ultimately decides on this. Uh and the town council does, does
Legislature is deciding it. I if we just, if there is enough public uprising and they say bad zoning, we don't like it, don't make the amendment, whatever, it's a state law. How can we do anything about it?
No, the the state, and and this is, this is a good, I I I, you know, I'm glad we're having this this conversation because the state doesn't tell us to adopt any objective design standards. They just say the only thing you can evaluate these projects with are objective development standards. So we're trying to, you're right, we we don't have to adopt this, but if we don't, then a developer, all they, the only thing that they will have to comply with are um sort of the units per acre um requirements and and some other setback, we, sorry, we have setback requirements and and a height limit, which is questionable because we only have in a lot of areas of town, height limits for commercial development, not for residential development in our, on our commercial sites. And that's pretty much would be it, and we would have no say over what it looks like or whatnot. So so that's the part that the state is mandating. What we're proposing here is to put something in place in response to that essentially, right? So um in order to do that, we have to actually make it one of our regulations of that governs development for these types of applications. And that's that is a choice, certainly, um but we want the planning commission to we want our community and we want the council ultimately to understand uh what, you know, as much as we can, given that it's, you know, we're going to try to simplify it as much as possible, but um to understand what uh the the regulate, what the forms ultimately are and the regulations are. Um but you're right, I mean, it's not, once we adopt it, the planning commission and the council aren't going to be weighing in on these projects. It's going to be staff just administering what we, what has been adopted. The same way, you know, yeah, I mean the same way we sort of im- implement some uh building permits, in a sense, you know, if you comply with
The implement, like the ADUs.
Exactly, exactly.
Margaret, because that came to that mission multiple times and a lot of the standards were developed with input and um you know, discussion through that, through the process at the commission and the council. And now when staff evaluates building permits for ADUs, we're using those objective standards to verify compliance.
And
But I I think the
Having a hard time with it, but that's not to say any, you know.
Yeah, I think you can make the argument, though, that you, you know, the public process results in a better end product. Um you know, if we didn't have such a, an extensive community process with the AD ordinance, we may not have had some of the standards that got put in place, and those standards help address, you know, privacy issues between neighbors. So I think there's a lot of value in getting input from the commission and the council and the members of the public to create a better document that staff then uses to evaluate projects.
So Margaret, does that help at all?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I I know you, yeah, I mean, it's not a, it's a, it's a, maybe a frustrating position to be in, but it's, I think we we're doing it to try to put more, at least some of the town's own imprint on what the state is requiring us to approve.
Does that make any sense to you that that's what we're doing?
I understand what uh Adam and Martha are saying, you know, I understand what they're saying. Does it make it, make me feel better about this? No. Um you know, and I think if uh if at least um you know, I have a better sense of an overview and the way it's exactly going to be used by an example, right now it looks like a Chinese restaurant menu, one from A and two from column B for this size place, you know, it's um and I think it's, you know, the the book I've looked through a number of times and it's, you know, it's it's a great resource, but um I've got to feel better about its use. But, you know, as I don't think, you know. In the end, the the state, you know, and the the town uh planning staff that has the uh decision-making, you know, and I hope that they uh, you know, do a good job.
Well, with staff does not have, uh yeah, I mean, I hopefully Well, with staff does not have, yeah, I mean, I hopefully that's clear too, is once these rule, you know, I, I, I guess I, I do fully support, and I, I think I clearly understand and totally agree frankly with the idea that it's really hard to figure out how to get from point A to point B and point C. And it, I think one of the things that we can have, well, I think that's a great comment to relay to Opticos to explain that, because I think we do want in the, in this public forum in a workshop, also just to be able to have them explain how you are supposed to navigate this. And it's not you and I really who are at the end of the, I mean, staff will, at the end of the day, if this gets implemented, it's going to be a developer who is ultimately going to be trying to navigate this. And staff is going to be looking at it and making sure that they've navigated it correctly in accordance with what, you know, what it's, how it's set up and what it's supposed to do. So, but I do think it's important that we try to make it so that anybody can really understand how you are supposed to navigate through the different zones. And part of what we'll be doing is stripping out some of these T zones that don't really relate to development in Corder Madera or the character that we have. So, but I, I, I think it's a good reminder for, for us to do that, Martha, or have Opticos include that as part of their presentation.
So, well, one more question, when a developer comes in with a, you know, with a plan and shows it to staff and they've chosen, you know, one from column A and two from column B, and column B isn't at all really doesn't fit with column A or Corder Madera or whatever. Does staff at that point say, you've got a really ugly design here, change it? No, so we could have anything built in Corder Madera is what you're saying as
No, no, I think that's the exercise is we want to pick which columns we want for different areas of town. That's our exercise.
But putting the pieces like the roof with the, with the style of building with the color with the, you know, all these different
We could.
Here.
Yes, I mean, that, that would be getting into a, a tremendous amount of detail, but we certainly could use those architectural, it's open to us if we want to use those architectural styles
Okay.
And say, this can only apply, this is what you have to build to in this particular part of town. That's going to be the rule. And they, the developer can say, can't say, I don't want to build that. We're going to say, if you want to use the state legislation, these are our standards and you're going to have to build that. Now, it, there is some exceptions to that that are, you know, we, we may complicate that a little bit because with state density bonus laws, but, but you, that's the general approach is we're setting those rules that they have to build.
Okay.
And we, we could also decide to not adopt one of the architectural designs. I think there's five or six different styles. If there's one we felt wasn't appropriate to Corder Madera, we could eliminate that from the toolkit. So we definitely have the ability to customize it.
We, in that case.
That would be the commission, the council and the decision.
Right, us.
I, I just, as, as an example in my head, I tried to put wind cup into some of these styles and I didn't find it.
Right, so there won't be that.
Wind cup.
So there's, so then that, then it's good, right? If you couldn't find it, that means that somebody couldn't build that again under the state legislation.
Okay, that's all for now.
Okay, pretty good. All right, Mr. Rizzo, you're the architect.
You're muted, Jim.
I said, so in general, I think, you know, I read up through a lot of things here. And I tried to understand all the SB, all the state, state bills. And I think for the general population, it would be nice just to have the bullet points from, from some of that legislation so that, you know, the people that, you know, don't understand a lot of it, the terminology in there, that would be really nice to just see with the roadmap. You know, why we're going about this and, and what our triggers are. I mean, one of the things that, that, that came to mind to me was, I think a lot of these things that get kicked into, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, but there's something in it, like there's a trigger, either five or six planning commission meetings and then, and then they can just do what they want. I mean, have, have we seen five or six planning commission meetings where you could, where discretionary review has become that cumbersome?
Well, no, and I think as I, my understanding is that is the, I, I'm not going to know if it is that SB 330 or is that the, is that the housing crisis act of
Part of SB 330 that limits it to a maximum of five public hearings for a housing project.
Okay, so it's not required, you're right. And so we have to get that clear clarified, but my understanding is there are some of those that, you know, it raises the question of the public hearings and the point of the public hearings, if they're subject only to objective design standards. Martha, do you have more on? I, I don't have it in front of me, but I know we had staff reports on this in SB 330, but that is a provision of one of them. I just don't, I'd have to read it again and go over exactly what's, what's
I mean, everybody on, on this, in this meeting can agree that we need to increase the density per acre and have more design standards at a minimum for commercial and mixed-use buildings. There's really not a lot in that general plan to guide us to, to some attractive buildings with nice findings. I actually went through, put a binder together, can't see it.
No, can't see it, it's getting zoomed out.
I saw it, it's very nice.
I put, I put, I had to put tabs on it, figure out, so I just took a building and I designed one. And I tried to get up to, get, get the volume up. And what became evident to me with the California bonus law and all the other criteria is the building that I could get was gigantic from one of the T zones that we were, we were considering. And one of the things that, that, that dawned on me is we almost need to think about these standards backwards. Like, we know that if developer comes in here, they're going to want to get some of these bonus standards in here. If, if they're are going to put a four-story on where we only want a third story and they're legally, they can do that. We want to put the guidelines into where that top floor is set back or has some sort of, they can still get what they want, we can get what we want. We almost have to design to the max building after the bonus density law and then figure out what our density per acre is. Because otherwise, if we go in it, into it to max it out right now, some of these buildings are going to come in, I mean, I just use that where, where the old, where TJ's gym is as, as an example, and it backs up next to a residential zone. Our current code's got 50 feet on the setback, the new one would be 20, let's say. And it could go up three, three stories and a bonus density, they can go up a four-story. So now, so I think when we look at it, I'd like to almost ask the question, should we be looking at this almost in a reverse? Like, what is the max terrible building envelope?
Yeah.
And then go back because
I think that's what we're doing, right? Trying to do.
Well, we're trying to do that, but like I said, when I did it, the building that, even I, if I was a developer, I was like, God, that's a big building. And I guess what I'm trying to say is if, if, if the guidelines can have certain volume characteristics in it as well, such as open space and upper setbacks for fourth floors and things like that, we can still accommodate the density bonus law and all the legislation. But I think we almost have to work backwards and try to figure that out. On some of the infill projects, obviously, if Macy's turns into a housing, there's nothing around it. It's really easy to design that with the objective standards. But we start getting into infill projects where it backs up to other zoning. That's where I kind of worry a little bit about not having any discretionary review. Some of the stuff that's obviously commercial in that strip, you know, by town center and at the mall, it's, it's pretty easy to figure that out, but
I guess, Jim, I would ask, when you did this though, I mean, part of this exercise is going to be determining what that envelope should be at TJ's. We, I don't think, I, I think they, they, nobody's determined that yet. Unless you, you think otherwise, I mean, it hasn't, that's what we're going to do at the next meeting, for example, is, is what I'd like to do.
Yeah, I mean, I just took one of the T zones, but I mean, if, if everything's up for grabs as far as setbacks and this and that, or, or are we going to, I guess what I'm saying is there's a lot of work just to do one zone. If you really want to, if, if these setbacks and the frontages and everything aren't kind of the stepping point, or I guess they are the stepping point, I mean, there's a, there's a ton of, I just took the, the lightest commercial zone and it's three stories or actually it's 50 feet max.
Yeah, but that's, that's not, why would we, would we do that? Would we want to do that? And we don't have to do that, right?
No, we, we don't. I guess what I'm saying is when I'm looking at some of these sites, you almost want to do, start with your three-story volume rather than, I don't understand this whole story thing, like two and a half stories, like,
Yeah.
Tell us how high it's going to be. And then we need to be cognizant of roofs and like, you know, there's nothing worse than, than having like a a 30-foot height and then you can't get a roof in there, right? And everything's an eight-foot ceiling. And, you know, we've got to think about building above the flood zone, so we're going to have to add another, you know, some, in some cases, three, four feet.
I think we'll explain the, the story thing and the height. My, we did ask about that same question, and I think they were saying two and a half stories in 30 feet. So it's, it's combined with the height so that you're not doing what you're saying, which is getting three stories and 30 feet. You're doing generous floor-tofloors in two and a half. But you have a 30-foot height max.
So they don't want to see a third story.
Right, right, exactly. It's a two-story with a, I mean, that with a basically, what did they describe it, dormer or something like that could go in, you know? But, but these are all good things I think we can ask them directly, I mean, you know, at the next meeting to try to get some clarification on that. But I, I do think that nothing's been set yet, so I want to be that clear about that. There are going to be some recommendations that we hear from Opticos about what zones belong where in Corder Madera. And the direction that we've sort of given them is like, it should be based on the existing character of our neighborhoods. And, and it does, went right, when it gets down to some of the commercial areas in, in the floodplain, you start to, there's not a real good defined character, so you sort of have a little bit more of a blank slate to work with, but but even there, I think we're going to be constrained by heights that we want to see not maxed out. And then, as you're saying, though, I, I do think it's a good point that the density bonus will likely kick, be allow them to kick it in and we should to another story as it talks about, and then what do we want for that other story? Setback, I think that's a great point, like, that should automatically be a setback for any additional story that's added as a result of density bonus or something like that. But these are all rules we can
One of the other things, you know, you know, they can pick what they want, like in the density law. So it's either height, parking or whatever. But maybe, maybe we could put criteria in for our preference.
Yep.
So for instance, we'd rather, we'd rather decrease our setback for you to get the units in rather than going up high. I mean, I don't know what it is, but I mean, I think if, if we, if we don't get specific on something like that, then we're going to, you know, people are going to want to build up because it's cheaper. So in some cases, I mean, I, and so I can't, I can't blanket that one, I'm sorry, but that, that was something that came over then. The one question I do have was, how do they, how does one element take precedent over another? So I found that one of the, the public frontage assemblies actually was more relaxed than the setbacks. Meaning that you could, you know, so what takes precedent? The setback or the front, frontage assemblies? You know, so I think, you know, paying special attention to, to those, and maybe, maybe you, you get more relaxed because there, there is an architectural element there, maybe that's the theory. You know, but that would be a good question to ask, like what, you know, is there a, a pecking order? So that, that was something that came up and, and then, God, there was one more. Sorry, excuse me. Oh, and then in, in some cases, I thought it got a little bit too specific in the end. They start talking about window frames being like two and a half inches. Well, what if they don't make window frames at two and a half inches anymore? I mean, it's almost like it should be, you know, we'd like to see a thinner window frame from three inches to an inch or whatever. But I think getting really, really specific is going to it's going to be a little difficult on the design team and, and the construction team to, to find very, very specific things. I think the intention is proportions with dealing with all these scales, right? They want to have the column, the column width, they want to have 12-foot to 15-foot heights on the ground floor. And I, and I did think they didn't have a lot of flexibility with the window sizes when I was looking at a few of the different styles, is my opinion. But you know, a little bit too specific. I, I think we can trust our, our staff to, you know, if there was proportionate, if there was a scale or proportion guideline, I'd rather see that than a specific, you need to use three-foot by five-foot windows or something like that.
Okay.
All right, that's it for me.
Thank you, Jim. Adam, I don't have much to ask, but I, I wonder a couple of things about this. How big is the group of communities that Opticos is serving with this? And is there any strength in numbers to these? Simply by having a number of communities with this toolkit? And is it advisable or I'm hearing you say it doesn't really matter, you can customize it as you wish. So we, we don't suffer for customizing it as we want. And it doesn't detract from a group of communities that have these standards adopted? And is there any point in having more communities with this than fewer communities? Is that give any power to the communities? And and how wide of a range is Optico serving with this project?
Martha, you wanted to?
So there, so it's all cities in Marin County with the exception of San Rafael participated in, in this project. And obviously everyone's going to be customizing it different, both on which zones are adopted and how it's applied in community. So, you know, Corder Madera is kind of in a unique position in that a lot of our commercial areas allow housing. So we kind of have to cast a broader net when we're assigning zones to different parts of town, whereas your community like Belvedere, they're only applying it to the kind of small areas of, of town. So, you know, everyone's using the toolkit different to meet their needs. But it is, you know, the majority of cities in Marin County are adopting some, some version of this toolkit.
And, yeah, and they're going to have maybe certain of our communities based on, again, I think the size of existing development in their cities, whether it's like, you know, San and Salmo versus Corder Madera versus Larsburg, you know, we may be more similar in the types of T zones that we actually map essentially in our communities versus somebody like Nevada, although, you know, and, and who knows, you know, other, other locations. But they developed this toolkit that they developed that you're looking at was intended to be like the master list, so to speak, the it, it's, it's the whole spectrum of Marin County development essentially in all these different cities. i- it's, it's the whole spectrum of Marin County development, essentially, in all these different cities. And then they're expecting each city to really pull some out and only use a certain, certain zones, so it, you know, uh, and others will use other pieces of it. And there is, I mean, certainly, um, I think there's uh, certainly, there's strength in that we all thought it was in all these cities. Thought it was a a good idea to get something in place and and develop this because many places don't have uh, any, uh, and any sort of requirements or standards for, uh, projects that would come in under SB thirty five or these other state pieces of state legislation. And then I also think there are some um, uh, others are looking at this as a way, and and Martha mentioned this, as a way to sort of start to get down the road of what sort of development we want to see as we think about in the housing element process. And as we think about where we're gonna actually want to push and 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 we're gonna need to sort of look at um, incentivizing or developing housing uh, in Corte Madera and where are those appropriate sites? So some may look at it more from a site by site, you know, look at individual sites and say, we want to apply the toolkit to these sites. Um, and others, you know, we're looking at it just as a baseline, um, uh, from, as Martha said, we we need it more widespread because we don't have any standards in a lot of our uh, areas of town and our commercial districts where how multifamily housing is currently allowed. And again, again, I I want to, uh, it's, we have to always keep in mind that the first phase of implementation is really the response, and I, you know, there are plenty of other potential applications of the toolkit down the road, but we, I I really want to for clear, you know, clarity purposes and for really making it clear to our community, uh, because I think Margaret's, uh, Commissioner Mendel is raising some concerns that are likely to be raised, but it's really in response to, in this first phase, to, um, uh, the legislation and and if we can get that adopted, then we can move on to other potential uses of this toolkit. And and there are a lot of other communities that are doing the same, the same work, uh, maybe a little bit different implementation, but a lot of them have working groups set up. Well, there's been plenty, you know, meetings with their commissioners and so on and so forth. So it's IJ article, I think we put in the in the February packet, you know, there's been press about this, et cetera, so.
Okay, so this feels like a a giant chess move, chess game, you know, where the communities all move in one direction and then the state will move in another direction.
Y- yeah, but it is, I mean, this first phase is is somewhat reactionary, uh, obviously, very reactionary. You know, um, it's, it's not intended to be something there that really, uh, it it it's really there just to we're trying to at least ensure that that what gets built under these laws is is, uh, from a form, height, character perspective fits it. Uh, you know, I I can't you know, and 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 right now, we don't have any regulations that have that allow us to tell the developer who applies under these pieces of legislation what it should look like at all. So, but yeah, I mean, it's some certainly chess moves, um, you know, it's, it's not a I don't want it to come off, I don't think any of us want it to be so adversarial in nature, um, because I think there are some real important, um, there's some value to this work that's been done. There are some really good, I mean, as we talked about in February, you know, the commission has been looking for guidelines and and looking for things to point to that that make up sort of good design and good multifamily architecture, um, that we can support, right? You know, and so i- it can be a very good tool in that respect. It's just, uh, you you know, we're, we're and and we certainly could use it for even where projects we retain discretion. And we, you know, the the town does retain discretion and has the planning commission can review, design review. And we can still use this toolkit in those instances. It's just the first phase. We're just trying to yeah, get it out, right?
But I I I I think it's a great toolkit, the way they put it together. Um, I think that the, uh, the comment that this ought to be, uh, sh- shown as a test case, so that, like many planning departments have the diagram that says, okay, if this and that, if this and that, to help us through this and do like sample of how this would work, as Jim has clearly done. And that it would demonstrate not only for applicants, but for the commission and and other townspeople exactly how this is supposed to work. And what's the pathway through it? Um, I think that some people might be worried about this as a overbearing uh, bit of government, you know, put on top of things, but I I see it as protection for the the town and, um, it should be represented as such. So, um, there's, I have posted since thinking, you know, it's all over my twelve section binder here. It's really quite, uh, daunting. So this is not a small project, and, um, I really want to see Opticos in front of us and and we'll work through the project, uh, work through a sample project and show us the pathway how this functions. And I think that'll give us a better idea of, uh, whoa, we need to put in safeguard A, B, C, and D, uh, based on what we see as trial cases run through this. And, um, we know what we want. Um, and the reason I ask about the other communities has to do with, um, are we gonna get pushed back if we start selecting this down into a, uh, instead of narrower, objective standards? Is the state gonna say, oh, sorry, you can't adopt that? Um, that's too restrictive.
I, I mean, I think it certainly at least has to allow the, and this is where it gets down into if we if we adopted something that really was like a single family home building type in a district that allowed fifteen units an acre, that that that's not gonna work, right? I mean, that that you you can't even get the the minimum minimum density that's allowed in those areas. But I think you're right. You're pointing to a good, there is a you know, we got the grant. I- i- it isn't intended to be a, a a disincentive to development. But, you know, we, at the same time, the state is allowing us to at least put our imprint on what development should look like under the state legislation and under, um, yeah, under the state legislation that only allows subjective standards to be developed. If ultimately, if ultimately, we we adopt standards that don't allow housing to get built, I think then you have a problem. Right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so I mean, that's probably what I, you know, and and only that can be really tested. And I think you're right. It's and it's wonderful that we have you know, Commissioner Rizzo, uh, willing to sort of try these out and see what you might get. And and we also have, um, Dan McCadden on our working group, um, as a, you know, multifamily housing developer and others, I mean, that was the point to sort of there's a balance here, you know, we 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 have to have something that ultimately can be utilized and not preclude the development of housing under state law. Otherwise, then you're right, we go too far and we we're sort of um, I I I can't say that we're gonna get somebody's gonna come and say that you can't do that, or it's illegal, but but but, um, you know, that that certainly wasn't the intent of of the grant funding that we received for this project.
I almost forgot that we should really be getting public comment here. Is there anybody online?
Just you, Peter.
Yeah, right.
No attendees, uh, uh, Chair Chase and, um, I I no emails.
That's fabulous. Okay. Um, so I I don't we haven't offered up a whole plethora of, uh, direction or advice, but, um, I I'm I'm anxious to hear these guys make their presentation and actually work through sample project and see what we can come up with, with them. So, other than that, um, unless somebody else has anything else to say, or you need more direction. I'm I'm looking forward to that meeting.
Yeah, I think, no, I think that, uh, if nothing else, that was a really helpful thing that we can make sure that Opticus works its way through the toolkit in the way it's intended. And then, like we said, the other main objective of the meeting is gonna be having them explain, they're gonna, they and and staff, I mean, we're gonna work with them before the meeting to come up with sort of a recommended zones for each part of town. Sort of the backing in, uh, Commissioner Rizzo that we talked about in terms of like actually what forms make sense, and then they're gonna explain how we got to that point or why, why they're the rationale behind those recommendations for the different T zones for different parts of Corte Madera. Um, and I think that will be the through that, there'll be, I'm sure, spark some discussion and questions about some of the things that Commissioner Bundy raised and in the details and the floodplain and other things that we think are topics that will likely come up. So hopefully that, um, I know it's, hopefully that it all works out and and we'll have, um, I think the goal of that meeting is really gonna get direction about where we go from there as staff to sort of start to you know, customize this thing and and pull some things out and create, create the map and how to create a sort of a, uh, um, a in a zoning ordinance amendment that would incorporate the things that we want to see, um, again, for this written response to the state legislation. Um, as the first time, so. I, I I know it's a little bit of an open ended discussion. We usually try to focus it a little bit more, but we really just wanted to hear from you. So I I think we got a lot of good, good feedback. So thank you.
All right. We'll move on. Um, we do have, uh, typical agenda items to go through. Um, it's nine thirty. We don't have to take any vote. We we can finish this stuff up and go through our normal agenda, if that's all right with everybody.
Let's get it done.
Okay. So, um, I attended, so to speak, the, uh, last week's, uh, council meeting. And, um, I will say that, um, the harbinger of drought in the presentation by MMWD is very apparent, and we're going to see some drought restrictions, uh, put in place, I think. Um, and those were in the paper following that meeting by a couple of days. So, um, it's gonna be down to maybe one day a week of irrigation watering. Uh, uh, you can't fill a new pool. Uh, there's gonna be a number of things that'll come about. Um, but, um, it, we're in a dire situation. It's the driest since, uh, the seventies. That that their water level is down to where it was seventy seven or something like that. So, uh, we're in a bad way. So, uh, it's coming. The, uh, they did swear in the new council, uh, member, and, uh, that's great that we now have a woman on the council. Um, there was a lot of discussion about, um, the, uh, smoke free areas and they're reconsidering the, uh, 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 ordinance to be totally smoke free, as I understand it. That's where they're gonna go with this. Then, um, uh, it's pretty dry, but the discussion about the pension obligation bonds process, um, is uh, it's, as I say, it's very dry, but I'll tell you what, it's very interesting. So, um, the fact that they're undertaking this, uh, measure to try and, um, get our way out of such a, uh, deep hole and the, uh, bond up and pensioned obligation is, um, something that, uh, they're going to undertake, and it'll be an interesting, uh, process to see if we can get out of it. So. That's about all I have to say about the, uh, last meeting, unless anybody else wants to kind of contribute to it. No. Okay. So with that said, Adam, do you have anything you want to report on?
Uh, a couple just quick things, um, so April nineteenth, um, at let me say six P M, uh, let me check real quick. Um, that is next Monday. Yeah, six P M, there's gonna be a community forum or community chat specifically related to the, the, um, the Casa Buena, the former America's Best Value Inn, that is now uh, housing residents that are formerly homeless. So if just wanted to note that, that's gonna be really, uh, led by our resident, um, members of the working group involved in that. Uh, and then I also just wanted to make sure you're aware, um, so I'm not sure we ever um, tied a a bow around sort of the end of the the town hall project and what happened with that. So, um, February went to the council, the council approved based on the recommendations from uh, the planning commission and all the two years of of work on that project, did approve the project, um. However, there were comments and discussion about actually, would it be better, um, even if it costs some more money to actually scrape the existing town hall and build a a new town, a new town hall? Uh, the entire thing new. And it was something that, uh, ultimately that, um, some of the feedback has led staff, uh, along with Todd, to really want to bring that back, that type of proposal back to the town council for further discussion and direction on. Uh, and so we're actually, um, going to be going back to the town council in May uh, with a proposal to fully basically, uh, demolish the existing town hall and essentially build back a similar building, but with different, you know, a roof form and all new that would actually um, uh, not change the rest of what the commission saw and the rest of the, uh, community saw. But literally just sort of, uh, have a, uh, a a new box with a, a new roof form on that, um, uh, corner where the existing town hall building is. And so, um, I think uh, I wanted you to be aware of that. It's it was, um, obviously somewhat of a change in direction, uh, and a little bit, so we'll just have to, you know, go, go ahead, and we're gonna go to the town council. You will, we are gonna actually um, look at putting up, uh, getting new renderings and putting up story polls to see what that new roof form would look like, um, but going from a flat roof essentially to a a, uh, a pitch roof and and and, uh, mirroring sort of the town council chambers in in some way. So that, uh, please be aware of that. I'll I'll give you some more information about exactly, um, when that meeting would be held. Uh, and try to give as much in information in advance as possible. But again, it was, it's really just the replacement of the existing box with a new box. Uh, I think the footprint might change just slightly um, based on the square need for new square footage and not, so. And that's all I have, um, at this point, so.
Okay. Great to hear.
Yeah.
To hear that's moving on.
And and actually, that ties somewhat to the pension, the bonds discussion, as there'll be more discussion about bonds at the next meeting, and I think Todd will be in a position to explain how it all relates together and and maybe has a a an ability to fund that lot that look somewhat more expensive project, um, for a town hall, so.
Very good. All right. Look forward to that. Um, that said, um, our next meeting will be the odds toolkit discussion with uh, Opticos. So that's great. And, um, then we have
It was sorry, it will, and just to remind you, it's gonna be a joint meeting, so we're gonna work on It was sorry, it will, and just to remind you, it's gonna be a joint meeting, so we're gonna work on the format, but essentially, it's a joint meeting with the technical advisory working group. I imagine we're gonna have all of you on together as panelists and. You know, uh, Peter, I'll reach out to you and if we wanna sort of format it in any specific way. You know, to distinguish for the. Public at least who's who. We may, we may want to do that, but I it, the way that we're thinking about it now is it's, it's obviously all, all of you, all of the. Both the planning commission and the technical advisory group would be panelists and have their vote, you know, be able to comment and and ask questions and whatnot. But we'll work on the the specific format of that together.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. We have two sets of meeting minutes to approve. Uh, anybody move to approve March ninth and March twenty third?
I moved to approve.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, then we have an I from everybody. I.
I.
Okay. Good. So then I am going to declare that this meeting is over and we can adjourn.
Good decision.
Thanks so much, everyone.
All right.